Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting of the City Council, December 14th, 2021, to order. And we've got a very full agenda today. But before we get started, a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, I talked to our mayor about 15 minutes ago. And he says every day he's getting better, he's getting stronger. He feels confident that he's going to be back here in January. Yay. And secondly, yesterday, Ms. Wooton and Mr. Branch and I, along with the city manager and very wonderful staff members, we recognized the service awards for our employees. And we had a traveling road show because of COVID. We didn't want to put everybody in one place. And we actually had COVID-free cupcakes. And it was so wonderful to be able to recognize the dedication of people who've been with us for 30, 35, 40, 45. And we had Mr. John Roberts. I hope he's well-listened. He's been here with us for 50 years. He has given our city 50 years of his life and to all of them. And actually, one of our colleagues, Deputy Holcomb, was there for his 30 years.
Thank you.
And you don't look old enough, Rocky.
Thank you.
But it was really a great thing.
Only when he was 12.
And if I can, Ms. Vice Mayor, I'd like to say, I was talking about yourself and the city manager. They were telling these employees with 30 and 40 years, please don't think about resigning. We have a workforce crisis. Stay with us a little longer.
And also, if you have any friends who need jobs.
Bring them over.
Tell a friend.
We need some more folks. So Mr. Moss is out of town. He's not going to be with us today. And Mr. Rouse, I think he's going to be here just a little bit later. But with all that, we have someone very exciting for you to meet today, someone that long awaited, long awaited, is our new health director. And I turn it over to our wonderful city manager.
Vice Mayor, members of council, as we sent you all an email last week, Dr. Caitlin Padati is our new Virginia Beach Health Director. She's a board-certified pediatrician with a background in infectious disease control and epidemiology. And she was most recently the medical director and state epidemiologist for the Iowa Department of Public Health. She's a Virginia native, Northern Virginia. We won't hold that against her. So she's coming back home, and we look forward to her tenure as the Virginia Beach Public Health Director.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager and Madam Vice Mayor. I am so excited to be here with you all in Virginia Beach. So I'll just say a few quick words, if it's okay. As you heard, I'm a pediatrician by training. I did grow up in the Northern Virginia DC area. And I have a medical degree and a master's in public health from the George Washington University. And I really loved clinical medicine. I'm a general pediatrician by training. But I was looking for ways to sort of impact children's health and families' health and wellbeing, sort of on that larger level. And so that's actually what brought me from my clinical training over to work with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, where I got assigned way out in the Midwest, much further than Northern Virginia, to Nebraska. So it was a bit of a change of an environment for me. But I've really enjoyed the time I spent both in Nebraska and in Iowa, serving at the federal and state levels. It's been absolutely wonderful to learn and get engaged in all of the wonderful things that we can do to support a community's health. And of course, that really includes COVID, especially over the past year or two. And so I can tell you, you know, I am now so thrilled to be able to be coming back home to Virginia Beach, to such a great community, where there are so many wonderful people and wonderful opportunities. So I just would like to say thank you, of course, to Dr. Duberry, to Dr. Chandler, to you all for the chance to serve the city of Virginia Beach. And I am really looking forward to what we can achieve together. So thank you.
We're thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Hilly has.
Oh, certainly.
If I may just say, I think we had good help for so many years. We took our health directors for granted. And unfortunately, it was during the time that it became extremely serious that we didn't have one. And no aspersions at all on the good people who served during this time. But it was just too much for two large cities when there was a crisis. And I think we always have to be prepared for the worst. And like I say, no criticisms at all for the folks who were serving. But a city the size of Virginia Beach, our health is too important. And we're glad to have you.
I am so excited for the opportunity to be here. You know, as you know far better than I, you've got such wonderful resources and opportunities. And I think, to your point, COVID really highlighted that there are so many things we can do and so many new and strong partnerships that I think we can take advantage of for a variety of health issues going forward. So I'm quite excited.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to start on the city manager's briefings, Mr. DeHany.
Madam Vice Mayor and members of council, there has been a brief typo. I think the first item is going to actually be presented by Lyndon and Lyndon's team. Lyndon, do you have a couple of things you want to say? Or you're just going straight to the presentation?
Yeah, it's going to be having finance.
Okay. All right, so go ahead. So we're going to do a comprehensive financial report update and also a general update on the city's finances.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, Ms. Vice Mayor, council members. As City Manager said, I'm here to present the annual comprehensive financial report. And as you all may remember, in previous years, this was called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. But now, moving forward, it's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report with the acronym of ACFER. So I'll do my best to try to remember that moving forward. But as you know, old habits die hard. So I'll do my best to remember that. As you got in the package, it was our over 300-page document of all the financial information pertaining to the city. And we're here to present that today. But before I get into the details of the financial reports, our external auditors, Cherry Beckett, are here to give you an update of their audit of our financial reports. So I'll invite up Laura Harden from Cherry Beckett to give her presentation. And then I'll circle back around to give you the financial results.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of City Council. I am pleased to be here this afternoon to present the results of the June 30, 2021 audit. So the audit, as I'm sure you are all very aware, is a very long and lengthy process. It involves testing of significant balances and transactions. So looking at the items that make up that annual report that you are seeing in front of you, we typically start this process in the summertime, where we gain an understanding of the city's internal controls, not only to help gain that understanding, but also to design those further audit procedures so that we are appropriately designing our testing around that. And then we are also, during that time period, we are performing compliance procedures over the Commonwealth of Virginia's Auditors of Public Accounts, specifications for audits of counties, cities, and towns, as well as compliance with Uniform Grant Guidance, which is commonly referred to as the Single Audit. Once we move into the fall, that's when we really start the brunt of our financial testing, where we're testing those balances. And then, as a part of that, we look at some of those items that are considered to be estimates, meaning that those numbers are subject to change based on the underlying assumptions and the underlying assumptions that make up those estimates. The most common are the allowance for doubtful accounts for receivables, as well as actuarially computed liabilities like pension and OPEB and depreciation expense. As I mentioned, we also do perform quite a few compliance audits with those Virginia laws and regulations, as well as federal grants. And as a part of that process, we're also gaining an understanding of the internal controls that surround that. The annual comprehensive financial report also includes a couple of unaudited sections, meaning that we are not providing an opinion on those sections. However, we do review them to make sure that they agree to the other data within the report. Those sections are the introductory section, the required supplementary information, and the statistical section. And then the other supplementary information within the report, we provide in relation to opinion, noting that we've tied that out to the other reports. So I am happy to report that we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is considered to be a clean opinion on the ACFER. That's the best opinion that you can get as a result of your audit. In addition, we also issued an unmodified opinion on the compliance reports. We had no material weakness matters to be reported to you. However, if we did identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a result of our audit, we would be required to report those here too today. We had no matters of noncompliance under government auditing standards, those specifications for audits of county cities and towns, as well as the Uniform Grant Guidance. In the ACFER, there were no changes in any kind of accounting principles. But the city did implement GASB Statement Number 84 during the current year, which is for fiduciary activities. And what that standard did is it required the city to go and look at everything that's considered to be a fiduciary activity to determine whether or not those items still met the classification to be reported as such, or whether it should be reported as a business-type or governmental-type activity. We had no difficulties in conducting our audit, no disagreements with management. There were no corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our procedures. We're not aware that the city consulted with any other accountants. And we are independent of the city, meaning that we give you an unbiased opinion. And then additionally, we did provide to the city a management representation letter at the end of our audit. And that concludes my portion. I'd be happy to answer any specific audit questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? Thank you for being concise.
Thank you very much.
All right. So now I will get down into the financial results of the audit. The first slide I'm going to start here with is Exhibit 1 of your ACFER. This is a high-level view of the city in whole, the total assets, total liabilities of the city, and then, of course, the net position. Just a couple of things to bring to your attention here. Of course, we have our net pension liability and that OPEB liability on our statements here, for the pension of $525 million liability and for OPEB, $94 million. I mean, here, the unrestricted net position, which you may be familiar with the unassigned fund balance of the general fund, this is $628 million on the net position level, which is a very healthy unrestricted amount. Here, we get down to the general fund budget to actual. We've been here in prior months giving you unaudited results, and they're not anything different than here, but just bringing them back up here. In total revenues, we exceeded budget by $52 million. And expenditures were under budget by $122 million, bringing a total fund balance to $305 million. Then we have the reservations of fund balance, which I'll get to on the next slide. But this brought down our unassigned fund balance of $110 million, or about roughly 9% of the FY '22 budgeted revenue. So that's in between your 8 to 12 fund balance policy that council has. So just a breakdown of what those reservations are. We have a total of $10 million in inventories and loans receivable, those loans being loans to the rescue squads, the volunteer rescue squads for ambulance purchases, and also the Vanguard $2.8 million loan that they have as well. We have other reservations for the school reserve fund. We have the school reversion and show-up that totaled about $62 million that are part of our reservations of fund balance. We have the use of fund balance in the '22 budget for capital projects that was approved in the '22 budget. So in all total, those reservations bring the unassigned fund balance to, like I said, $111 million. So here's just a 10-year chart of where that unassigned balance was, the total and the percentage of the next year's revenue in history. Last year, of course, with all the questions around COVID, of course, we had the highest fund balance unassigned amount that we had in the past 10 years. And now it's back around the 9 to 11% of where it's been in the past 10 years. So just a highlight of those general revenues. The ones in the green here are revenues that have either exceeded budget or exceeded prior-year collections. When we were going through the budget process in '21, you know, that was right when the COVID, the pandemic started. So a lot of those revenues were adjusted down because we really didn't know the true impact of how that would be with the city's taxes. As we can see, that as far as a tax basis goes, that impact was small. We exceeded budget in a lot of areas. Real estate, personal property tax continue to be strong. We know that sales tax, meal tax, we did not see that huge impact that we thought we would. So that's leading to that $52 million of exceeding budget. This is just a highlight of general fund expenditures. The majority of those expenditures being our transfers to schools for our share of their expenses. Salaries and operating expenses, of course, are our next two highest. Just to point out, the operating expenditures, you see the blue line represents FY '21 compared to FY '20, the orange line, the operating expenses, why they're so much higher. Our biggest one is our $28 million that we were able to give to the United Way, thanks to our CARES funding that we received to cover salaries, which allowed us to provide funding to United Way. Just an overview, we've got our enterprise funds here. We've got water and sewer, stormwater, waste management, and the parking fund. Just a high-level overview of the total assets, liabilities, and of course, net position. Same thing, the unrestricted net position has a positive balance and a strong net position balance for what we're looking for. A water, again, enterprise fund, revenue and expenditure schedule, and the change in net position, all those enterprise funds continue to do well and spend within their means. We have here the TIP fund, kind of a two-year comparison, because we know that TIP fund is funded a lot through local taxes, being hotel and meal tax. And just wanted to show that the fund balance for this fund continue to be strong. It's at $27 million. We know the majority of these expenses are for debt service for projects down in the beach area. So we did not see the impact, of course, with the taxes in the TIP fund. And same thing, too, with the TAP fund. Just thought it was important to show here that it's an ending fund balance of $6 million. Wanted to show the Parks and Rec Fund, another one of our special revenue funds that might have been hit hardest because of COVID. We know that a lot of the programs that they were not able to have due to closures and how that affected some of their charges for service revenue. So we see that the change in fund balance between FY '20 and '21 was a $3.7 million loss, but still leaving them with a $7.5 million fund balance. Wanted to show this here, too. These are the annual payments that we make towards our long-term liabilities each year. For bonds, we have a total of about $160 million when you factor in principal and interest payments. Our contributions to our pension and OPEB total about $60 to $70 million for the city. And then, of course, you have the contribution that the schools make as well. I just wanted to highlight from last year's ACFER that the city received the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence Reporting for last year for our ACFER and also our popular annual financial report that we do. So with that, I'm kind of done with the FY '21 results. And just wanted to do a brief presentation about FY '22 and our interim statements through the end of November. Revenues continue to be strong. We know that the levy for real estate tax was due on December 5th. So we've started seeing some of those revenues come in in the month of November. So that would be, some of the timing differences associated with that will be your differences between why FY '22 revenue could be higher than '21. We have our total expenditures in here as well that are all tracking well. We have our glide path here that we normally do that has a two-year average versus what the actuals are. Expenditures to date are 44.2% of the total budget. Where comparing them to prior years, it's around 48%. And then revenue is at 24.2% compared to 26. So a lot of that, too, being with those timing differences that I had talked about with the real estate taxes. Here, just a breakdown of revenue for '22 revenue through November compared to prior years. I don't need to go into every single line item, but everything is tracking well. We know that sales tax continues to be a positive increase and showing that it's continuing to increase, both partly due to inflation and also demand is higher. Same thing with meal tax continues to be strong. And hotel tax, starting to see those rebound to more around what they were pre-COVID levels. Then this is just a highlight of expenditures for the general fund through the month of November. Nothing major to point out here, just that they continue to track well compared to prior years. We will be back in January to do an update for the December interim and then continue that out through the remainder of the year. So with that being said, I will take any questions, if there are any.
Kevin, could you back up a couple slides? Yeah, that one.
This one?
No, one more. One more. Right. Fiscal, I'm looking at the bottom-line numbers there.
Correct.
Fiscal '20 is 323.4, and fiscal '21 is 20. Is that the total year?
Yep. So this is going to be as of November. So it's, again, going back to the real estate. If you look at the real estate in FY '20, you have $208 million compared to $98 million. So that's all going to be around that timing difference of when that December 5th levy might have been paid. A lot of times, it's due to when the banks transfer their real estate taxes.
That's all timing.
Yeah, that is nothing to be concerned about at all. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you for your presentation. There's lots to be happy about.
Yes. And just to let you know, too, Ms. Vice Mayor, I've got a letter here that I need you to sign. So this is a state requirement that we're here presenting to the board. So I'll have you and the city manager both sign this afterwards. So then we can submit this to the state that we were here and presented to you all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. DeHany.
Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time, Bobby DeHany is going to come and present to council on the stormwater regulatory update. This is the work of the focus group or the work group that council authorized back in June to discuss possible changes to make the current stormwater regulations more efficient, more predictable, and less costly on the initial front end as it relates to some of the typical rezonings that we typically see. This work has been vetted every Friday for the past three or four months with a work group comprising of city employees, public works, planning, and definitely a lot of stakeholders from the business and the development community. Bobby DeHany will give a brief overview of what's going to likely be presented to you all for consideration in January for approval for changes to the regulatory stormwater regulations.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. As the city manager noted, I'm here to provide an update on the stormwater regulation work group and provide you an update of where we have moved and what improvements we believe we can make with some of the proposed regulation changes. I do want to note in the room, we do have Claudia Cotton and Takbui, both representatives of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association, formerly TBA, that will also provide some remarks in a little bit after I give you a brief overview of the process. So again, my goal is to provide you an update on the workshops and our progress, high-level set of comments that we've received from the stakeholders that have been most impactful, as well as a high-level proposal for changes. Along with that, give you some examples that have some visuals and as well, provide an anticipated timeline that we hope to continue to move forward in a way that can help development in the city, as well as help our staff continue to move through the process for plan review. So some background, as a reminder, in July, there was proposed changes to the Stormwater Appeals Board that were moving forward. It was noted, of course, that the Stormwater Appeals Board was a hot topic due to the existing changes to the Public Works Design Standards Manual and in regards to the stormwater regulations. There were some proposed changes to remove staff from the board, as well as provide additional citizens to be members of that board. There were public comments that noted that there was concern about the makeup of the board in those changes. So council deferred that item with a note to city staff and as well as the manager that we would provide an update or review the current regulations with our stakeholders and to essentially give a year-end review of what those changes have looked like, as well as how it has impacted development. Council members Jones and Moss were requested to be liaisons to this stakeholder group, and they have met with us pretty frequently as well, as we've performed these Friday meetings with the development community. The focus of the stakeholder meetings, a key focus that we wanted to make sure that we started with was to maintain flood resiliency of the current stormwater regulations. That is one of the commitments that we have as we looked at these rules in order to make sure that we assure the public that we're not going to cause additional flooding or lessen the requirements of these regulations as we move forward. It was a tough balance to strike as we were moving forward, but framing it in that way allowed us to have very candid conversations about the regulations, as well as what we can do in order to speed the process up as long as we maintain that resiliency. This also allowed the stakeholders an opportunity to identify areas of improvement, both in process and regulation. So we had a facilitated discussion, thank you to Howard Waldy as well with Office of Performance and Accountability, that helped to shepherd those discussions so that we can have a focused input, as well as focused output, so that we can make sure that we're providing comments back and not just hearing and then just doing our own work. We wanted to make sure it was a fully facilitated discussion, as well as an opportunity for us to try to have candid conversation. This allowed staff also the opportunity to review the solutions or come up with solutions as well, and of course, track comments and responses. So the stakeholder focus group that we had, we had external representatives from CVBIA. And that group also consisted of developers and consulting engineers, council members Jones and Moss, city executive leadership. We've had Mr. DeHany, as well as deputy city managers attend this meeting, as well as LJ and myself, the Director of Public Works. Being in this meeting, letting them understand that this is a very high priority to us to make sure that we move the needle forward a little bit so that we can help progress with development. And of course, we had staff from Planning Public Works and OPA with us as well to make sure that we had everything tracked. At this point, because we are discussing our stakeholders, I wanted to allow Claudia Cotton of the CVBIA to come up and share a little bit of discussion about how they felt the process went, and I will pick up from there to go over the changes.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. DeHany. Good to see you all. Pardon me. We had leaders of the development and engineering community in this stakeholder group, and I have to tell you, we all appreciate very much that you created a venue like this for us to share our concerns and interest. About a year and a half ago, we spoke to you all about the new design requirements and stormwater requirements, and we were concerned then about how the new standards would negatively impact land development. And it turns out, we feel like we had a right to be concerned. The group, as Bobby described, we had a variety of experienced people, both single-family builders, multifamily builders, consulting engineers that have worked with all kinds of development in the city. So we feel like we were able to have very candid discussions about the technical issues, both with the regulations, the model that you all may have heard about, as well as the process. We worked on a lot of modifications that we are going to be reviewing this coming Friday in a stakeholder meeting that I assume you're going to be hearing about in a few minutes. We also really appreciate the process changes that we were able to discuss prior to this. Believe it or not, in some cases, it was taken over a year to get things approved, even for a single-family or duplex lot. So we appreciate the process changes that will be made. We certainly view all of these things with an eye towards how to keep housing affordable in the city, and we hope that you do as well. We feel that the work has been good work so far, but we feel like it's only a start. We feel like we have more to do. Collectively, you as policymakers, staff as regulators, and the builder, development, and citizens of Virginia Beach all need to find best practices to protect people and property, but to allow for future growth and development. So I'm here to answer any questions you have about the process and our involvement. And again, I encourage you to continue this work. We think there's more work to do. Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Before I move on, staff is fully aware that this is the first step to understanding how we can better improve our process as well as continue to get, if there is a way to get to the correct answer, but faster, we need to try to find a way to do that. And so we know that this is an open dialogue and a continued dialogue that we need to continue to have. As we, again, staying within the boundaries that we've been given currently, which is to maintain the resiliency of the current regulations. And that is one of the keys as we, as we continue to move forward. So as noted, we had a pretty robust conversation every week where we focused on different topics for each meeting, starting with duplex smaller lot development, talking about process, talking about modeling. And we really were able to hone in on a few concerns and questions that we've had with a number of recommendations that were provided to us by the development community as well as staff. Staff also participated in where we thought there were, there were gaps in the, in the process. Through this process, there were 86 recommendations that were provided with a number of them being accepted, a high number of them requiring approval, which is what will be before you in January, hopefully. And with a number of them still under review because we're unsure of how to continue to move forward, which is why we believe we need to continue to work on these as we, as we hone in on some of the further concerns that the development community may have. Some of the key comments from the development community, of course, were to reduce the number of reviews. As you've noted and has been told to you by many of your constituents, the development review process is, is very iterative and it requires a number of reviews in order to make sure that the information provided to us matches what they actually are developing. Part of that issue, I don't want to say issue, part of that concern is that they will do their design plan, which shows where the building sits, parking, where the storm drainage is, but then they also need to match that to the model. And the model has to reflect the same data. And what happens is that there are times because they're essentially, I don't want to say designing the site twice, but they're inputting information from one to the other that the data doesn't match. And our staff is charged with making sure that information is, is matching. And so there may be comments that say, this doesn't match your plan. And it can be iterative because as they change things, different things may get missed. And so that is why a lot of times that, that is a, it requires a lot of reviews. We've also noted that there was a need to provide simplified design options for projects that have limited watershed impact. So identifying and knowing that there are opportunities where, based on the modeling and the science that we have, that there are some developments that have a less impact, greater impact to a watershed and to make sure that we provide a design criteria that is simplified, but still provides the same resiliency as we move forward. One of the key and big ones, as you know, with the entitlement process for rezonings and conditional use permits, there was a request to reduce the complexity of preliminary stormwater analysis. So that's the analysis that, that staff receives at the beginning of the rezoning and use permit process that states that we believe that they will have the ability to meet the stormwater regulations. Because of how it has evolved a little bit, the usage of the models has been, again, a very iterative process. And because of the information that is, is required to be input because they're still in the due diligence phase of hopefully getting their rezoning and other things like that, they haven't gotten all that hard ground data to input into the model. So they're essentially entering information they think is correct based on some high level information. But then as they put in additional information, as they obtain additional topographic information, they then have to re-input it into the model. And so it becomes this duplicative process where we believe as staff that we can still get a, a good feeling of that they will meet the criteria if we simplify it. And of course, and I'll get into that as we continue to move forward with a potential proffer that they provide that they would have to come back to council to change if they choose to request a variance from that requirement. Another one is to align modeling tolerances of no impact. I know you've heard that a lot from some of your constituents to align with the Army Corps practices. So Army Corps has been utilizing modeling for a very long time. I know that you've probably heard zero point zero zero, right? You've probably heard that from a number of your constituents. This aligns that requirement of no impact to align with what the Army Corps modeling standard is. And so that does allow for us to make sure that we're within those tolerances for modeling and not being overly conservative as we move forward. So Army Corps, as you know, are the same ones that, that review dam inundation zones, make sure that dams work properly levees. And so they're using modeling for those kinds of things. It's important that we at least stay to that similar standard as we continue to move forward. And of course, there's always process improvement that's necessary, improve communications during the plan review process. And, and we just had a meeting today. It's not just for complicated issues, but for simple issues as we continue to move forward. Unfortunately, due to the amount of plans, we still are, are, have a lot of plans coming in for review, which is a good sign. However, that makes it more difficult for us to pick up, to regularly pick up the phone in mid-project while the consulting engineer is working on another project to try to get us on the same page. So we've tried to come up with ways that we can improve those communications so that we can try to get these reviews down in, in, an approval quicker. So key highlight of the proposed changes. And there are a number of changes as we will provide the, the strike through or the changes to the public works design standards manual as far as its regards to the stormwater management regulations. One of the keys is to provide an alternative design option for projects that are that limited watershed impact. Before it used to be defined as being 20,000 square feet of land disturbance. So if you till the 20,000 square feet of dirt, that would be what was considered the, the limitation for what was something that was considered less of an impact to a watershed. Looking back at the information that was provided to us by the modeling group, Dewberry, that they provided the models to us, the actual is the increase in impervious cover of 20,000 square feet. Between 20 to 25,000 square feet is actual the more of an impact of a water, to a watershed than the actual land disturbance. So we align that with what they, what they noted in the, in the report that they provided to us, which we believe will help to impact as we provide simplified design criteria for those projects. It will impact a significant amount of the plan reviews that we have in our office. Spitballing guesses, maybe 60 to 65% of the plans we have fall into that category. The different design alternatives that we have for them, we believe though still conservative, are a lot quicker and they can get the engineer through the process faster. And as, as you know, time is money. And so we, and I'll show you that as we can, as I provide you with additional examples of those changes. One of them, as well as to remove from the design storm, the hundred year design storm was to remove the one, one and a half foot of sea level rise. It wasn't to discredit the sea level rise at all from our impacts. The key is for that is that as we build out our, our protection for the city for a hundred year storm, typically we are notified and we have an understanding of there's a storm coming that meets that criteria. And we will be prepared to fortify the city at that, at that level to, to lessen the impact of the one and a half foot sea level rise. So that would include the storm surge or anything else that may come because, of course, if you look at a hundred year storm, that's typically a hurricane or something else that, that is a really significant has buildup that we will, we will have notification for and the city can prepare for. So if the city can prepare for it, do we need to have the individual property itself prepare for it as well? And so that's, that's one of the ones that, based on what we've reviewed and the modeling information that we're comfortable making sure to move forward. And I'm saying we, that there's a lot of work from public works and the public works engineering center as well as the development services center, staff engineers that have looked at this as well. Again, matching the Army Corps standard for stormwater model tolerance. So this provides that, as you hear zero point zero zero, this provides some relief to that so that it actually is, it is still supposed to be, it is still no impact. Let's keep that in mind. It is still no impact. It's just assuring that that number isn't something that is, that is not attainable as we've seen for a lot of projects as they move forward. And of course, the revising the requirements for preliminary stormwater analysis to hopefully simplify, but also provide the necessary assurances to city council as we move forward with any discretionary applications. And then also provide checklist on the stormwater modeling to reduce the, the regular comment, so a frequently asked question, which again is part of what we were doing. We're still in, coming out of year one for our stormwater modeling. Those are things that we know we need to do as we need to engage the public and do those kinds of things with frequently asked questions as well as meeting with them regularly to go over potential storm modeling, stormwater modeling, regular comments. So to provide you kind of a visual for an example of how, how the simplified method can help. This is a current plan that is under review on 71st Street. The current design includes six swim models that have been provided with a hundred, a hundred and forty-five page summary that has to be reviewed by staff as they're submitted. And it requires a 1,230 cubic feet of stormwater storage based on the calculations. Based on the simplified design criteria, as we continue to move forward, and I know the devils are in the details, but the design criteria, the simplified design criteria we have come up with as staff allows them to be able to do a calculation very quickly utilizing essentially an Excel spreadsheet, knowing what their existing, their, their existing coverage on the lot is, what their proposed development coverage, impervious coverage on the lot is, and then calculating out the, the required stormwater volume that they need to, to handle. And with that, it does provide, it does require an increase in this example of one, of, from to 1,350 cubic feet of stormwater storage. There is an increase, but if it can be done in Excel spreadsheet, not using the stormwater model to try to prove it, it can be done much quicker and simplified and get them through the process faster. Now, it's important to note that the simplified process doesn't remove them the opportunity to, to provide more engineering to try to lessen that impact on their, on their client's property. So if they chose to run the model and wanted to use less, less stormwater storage, they could use the engineering principles in the model to still, to still do that, to provide that accuracy. In this, in this case, for this proposed duplex, the blue area that's highlighted is the area that was proposed or is currently proposed by the consulting engineer to handle the stormwater management for the site. Proposed would add just to this additional area to provide the stormwater management necessary based on that simplified calculation. So it's not, although it is a, over a hundred cubic feet of additional stormwater storage, as you can tell from the design, it is just filling in a gap that is here and can be relatively simple to, to perform and do as they continue to move forward. We'll apologize. I do have an additional example that was not provided in your, in your packet. So if you bear with me here, I, there was one, another example that we wanted to make sure that we showed, which was a commercial project off of Witch Duck Road that's under submission right now. The current stormwater model is a 207 page summary that they have and using the most conservative number out of the model that they have in order to try to design the site. So that would have required them, that's, for those that are, understand it's, it is the static tailwater that they, that the design engineer decided to utilize, which again is the most conservative, most impactful to the design of the property and has significant stormwater storage for this proposal. And again, I do apologize, I don't have this, but I can provide this after the, the presentation. Again, simplified calculation utilizing Excel, still showing the proposed increase in impervious cover. And then based on the soil types, the storage volume actually was decreased in this, in this instance. And the reason for that is it more, the, utilizing the simplified design criteria more, keep in mind that the consulting engineer utilized the most conservative proposed, conservative requirement that we have. They could have used either a variable tailwater or an opportunity to change the, the level of the water during the storm, which would have significantly reduced that stormwater requirement. But because they were trying to do it as quickly as possible to get through the process, they utilized the most conservative method, which gave them this large storage amount. Staff believes that this amount more accurately aligns with what would have come out of any of the other iterations if they would have utilized the other stormwater opportunities affordable to them. The original proposal shows these two areas for stormwater management. As you know, staff, or you may not know, but staff is, is not a fan of having stormwater management in the back of a property. It makes it hard for maintenance. It makes it lost. And it doesn't have this ability for resiliency where if there's overflow, that it can go directly into the city system. And so it does make it a little difficult as you have this additional stormwater in the back run of pipe to get to the front, to get to our storm system, which it has to discharge to. We're typically not a fan of putting it in the back of, of the property. Based on our discussions with the consulting, discussions with the consulting engineer, this is where they would anticipate relocating all the stormwater management, which is to the front, which provides additional resiliency. Again, as I noted, and as there's overflow, this would overflow into the city system, directly into our stormwater system rather than overflowing onto their property and then making its way out of the driveways or the pipes to eventually to the front of the property. As the comprehensive plan amendment that was provided and was deferred by council, I wanted to provide an opportunity to show the information. It was included in your Friday package for what changes the staff was proposing to the preliminary stormwater analysis. As you know, right now, we, we require staff, because of the, the questions that have come from city council, we require the, in order for us to provide a positive recommendation, the, the consulting engineer to provide a pretty significant amount of information dealing with the stormwater modeling, showing that they will provide either, they will have the ability to meet the stormwater criteria, whether it be no impact if it's a flooded situation or otherwise. The key is, is that we believe we can still get there. We can, we think we can get there, but in a more simplified manner. And that simplified manner is in these two options. The one option is to, that they volunteer, if they, if they happen to volunteer proffer stating that they won't provide, they won't impact upstream and downstream, essentially saying that they will meet the regulation, they would be afforded the opportunity to provide a simplified stormwater analysis. It does not have to use the city's model. They use the information out of the city model, but they can use any software that they want to show that, which aligns with engineering practices, which is what, which is permissible. The key to the proffer is that it brings it back in front of city council if there is, if there is a need for a variance because they can't make it work, right? I think there was some concern from some council members that if it doesn't work, is staff granting variances to make it work? And so we felt as we had the discussions through that, that we could meet that criteria if we say, well, if they volunteer a proffer to say that they won't, they won't show impact, that puts the onus on them to have to come back through the process in order to, in order to meet that criteria. And it doesn't pressure staff to, to grant a variance because city council already approved the, the application, if that makes sense. And of course, option two would be if they choose not to provide that proffer or to volunteer a proffer of that nature, then we would still require the full analysis, right? So it gives the applicant an option. Choose, choose your path on how you want to move forward. It's up to you. But here's the easier path or here's the, the path that we currently have. And that's what we've really done with a lot of these changes. We still provide the same path moving forward, but we have added additional options for them so that they can get through the process. Of course, what we do need to talk about is a stormwater appeals board. And I will tell you that this still requires additional discussion with the stakeholders. We are working through this. We've had no consensus on kind of what the, the role of the stormwater appeals board is. So we took a first stab at what the discussion, during the discussion that we had with the council liaisons as well as the development community that were in the room. And we took a first stab at this, of course, meaning some of the requests from the development community that talked about adding specifically a civil engineer and other design professionals as a qualification of the board, adding two alternates to assure that we can make sure that board meets, as well as removing city staff members as voting members of that board, clarifying who is supposed to provide staff support. And this one section, which is the one that needs further discussion is add that there is a section that is already in the, in the stormwater regulations that says you cannot get, you can only get variances from these sections. It would be proposing to add section 115 from the stormwater management ordinance to that section that says you cannot get a variance to these, you can only get a variance to these sections. Removing that one dash 15, which is essentially the requirement of the additional 20% rainfall, the requirement to use the model and the information from the model. So those would be the two things that no, the staff nor, the staff could not grant a variance to in that process. Again, we still need to talk that through the stakeholders. We will probably have a very lengthy discussion on Friday. But I do want to say that is a proposal that staff came back with based on our discussion with the council liaisons as well as with the, our discussion that we had with the development community. This is the proposed timeline. It is very aggressive as we continue to move forward. We will say that staff believes that these proposed changes, although the devil is in the details for the words that are written down, we believe that these changes will help efficiently get plans through the development review process, will, will maintain resiliency, but as well kind of lessen the burden on, on how difficult some of these more, I don't want to say basic, but less impactful developments to stormwater can get through the process. It's not going to change that large projects are going to be required to use the model because they have watershed impacts that are greater, that need to be checked. We haven't, that is not one that we have broached. That is one that, that we understand and and have a understanding with the development community, that's not, that's not where we're at. But we do hope that we can get this, the smaller projects kick free, which will help ease the burden on staff as well as the development community. We're currently have, our plan is to send out by the end of the week to the development, a planning and community development notice saying, here's all the proposed regulations, please review and provide comment. Our goal with that is to do the same thing that we did with the stakeholders, note all the comments and review the comments so that council knows that we didn't just ignore comments. We got, wrote all the comments down, we'll review them, see whether we needed to adjust anything or not, and then provide that to you again in a presentation hopefully on January 7th, as we close the comment period at that point in time. If there are no significant changes at that point, we would hope to bring this to council, those proposed changes to council on January 14th for adoption. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Any questions? No. I don't, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say, Mr. Tahan, thank you and your staff, and those who were a part of the task group and the committee. This is a tremendous undertaking, and I can see from the work that you've put forth and, and all of the information that you've gone through, quite a task. And I just want to say thank you and to your staff for taking the time to do this. As you mentioned, it's a first step, but I'd say it's a great step in the right direction. And thank you to Ms. Cotton and those who came out to be a part of this process, and just certainly look forward to continued communication and working on this issue. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
We really appreciate it, Bobby, thank you. Oh, Ms. Henley.
Just a comment that, you know, from what I've been hearing from individuals and groups too, it, it's all a matter of trust. And who knows when we're going to earn the trust that what we're doing, because unfortunately, there are still people who feel that any development at all has got to be, and be, be a problem. And, and I think convincing people that there can be development that will not lead to flooding is, is going to be, it's just going to take time. And so I think the way that, that we go about this is really important, to make sure that we, we still retain the, the confidence of the public, that we are not allowing development that's just going to turn around and cause more problem. I mean, we've got an application on today's agenda that the folks in the community are concerned about and so forth. So, I don't know, but the main thing is that we, we, we understand that we've got to, as we go through this process, retain the trust and confidence of the public while we meet these concerns of the development community. That's the important thing, you know, that we, we answer the questions, and of course, time is going to be what tells the next time we get a major event, which we don't want. But anyway, it's, it's a little difficult to, you know, in talking with the public to even talk about, you know, proposed developments, because the, the inclination is, oh, well, we're just going to be repeating the same thing over and over. So I don't know how we, how we move forward and keep that trust, but that's going to be the big challenge.
Yes, ma'am. And I will, I will note that we still have above and beyond the state minimum standards for water quali, quantity, still, we're still above and beyond that with our resiliency, utilizing things that other localities aren't using yet, which includes the additional 20% rainfall, our additional requirements for storage on site. We are still above and beyond what is the minimum required by the state. And so we are, our goal is to maintain that, but also try to, to help move it if we can, if we can get the same answer, but a little quicker. And you're right, Ms. Henley, we do have a tough road forward to, to make sure that we show the public that they understand that we are still trying to maintain those regulations.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Ranch.
Yeah, I'd like to just echo what Ms. Henley said, that we need to keep our ears open as this moves forward. This was a major change to our stormwater ordinance, and Mr. Jones, I want to thank you and Mr. Moss is not here, but this is a lot of work you all put into this. And I thank you on behalf of the council for all the time. I mean, I went through every one of these recommendations on here, and that must, those must have been quite some meetings that you all had to, to get to this point, and I appreciate it on behalf of the council. And I do look forward to the input from the stakeholders. The one group I'm, I'm, I'm missing in all of this is our planning commission. And are they going to get a briefing like we've gotten today? And I think they're part of this whole process, and I'd like to know what their role is going to be in terms of getting briefed on this and, and any potential input they would provide for us.
We, we can provide the planning commission with the, with the same presentation, so that they're aware of where we're moving forward as, as they are part of the discretionary application process. I will say that because this is in the city code, this does not require the planning commission to review these changes, it is just something that can be adopted by city council. But I do believe that as the planning commission being utilized as a, as a way to provide input to the public and to the development community, that we will engage them moving forward as we, as we provide them with this and hopefully get any other comments as well.
I think they'd be a great vehicle for us to get, interact with the public, and I always value the verbatims that I get from their meetings, they're very informative for me. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council at this time, LJ Hansen, our Director of Public Works, will come and brief council on a stormwater program overview.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Bobby just gave you an overview of what our development community is looking at in terms of stormwater. And stormwater is, of course, a complicated issue that, that we never seem to have enough time to talk about. Today, my opportunity is to speak to you a little bit about what we're doing on our This afternoon, I hope to speak to you about a couple of things. First of all, letting you know a little bit about our funding sources, which I'm sure you're aware of, but helping to understand how that structure works, how it has worked historically, and how we hope it to work in the future. Talk a little bit about our operations and our regulatory setting, and then talk a little bit about our flood protection program, which of course has had a dramatic change with the passing of the referendum. I threw this slide in because I think it really sets a tone. This, this work zone is important because we're about to do an incredible amount of work. Of course, we have some work that's already underway, but we have an incredible amount of work ahead of us. And we're very fortunate with the passing of the resolution that we now have some resources to be able to make that happen. But I also threw it in because a lot of what I'm going to talk to you about today is in itself a work in progress. We think we have a pretty good plan, but really, we're, we're just about a month away from passing a resolution and dramatically shifting what we have done historically. And so I, while I ask, while I ask you to understand that I'm giving you the very best information that I have today, please understand also that some of this may change as time goes forward. We have a CIP process that's under proposal at this point, we have a budget proposal that is coming forth, and, and of course, we have a number of years ahead of us, so that some of these things are bound to change in time.
And LJ, I'll step in real quick. And Vice Mayor, members of council, in the Friday package, we include a, a pretty thorough report on what we're doing right now to set up the flood protection program, you know, and it's the details, a lot of the work that's going on behind the scenes with staff as we pivot towards this historic amount of money to take care of a tremendous challenge with the opportunities that is presented. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes that we're working towards, and we're giving the best presentation we can right now, but a lot of this is subject to change as we hear more information on the application of the different funding and the impacts it will have to the projects and the different programs.
Thank you, sir. Prior to now, our funding model has been a little bit cluttered, I guess, for lack of a better word. There's a lot of different sources of funding that get involved in what we have done with our stormwater program. Of course, we have the Stormwater Fund itself, which is based upon the ERU. And that has been predominantly the driver for what we have done, funding stormwater management. Of course, with the addition of the lockbox, that allowed us to do a number of other things, but it was restricted in its use. We could only use it for certain, certain purposes, which I've tried to illustrate in this diagram, basically meaning that it, it wasn't to be used for CIP projects. In fact, for the most part, it's used for salaries. And I'll talk a little bit more about the lockbox here in just a minute. But one of the things that I hope that you do see in this, in this presentation, is that the stormwater engineering, the orange box on the top, that's usually one of our biggest draws, and we spend a lot of money on, on CIP projects or flood protection projects. That's to add additional capacity. And as we do that, it reduces the amount of money that can fall to the regulatory program, and then further to the stormwater maintenance. And, and that caused a problem from the, for the maintenance folks. And I know you've talked to, you've heard from Philip Cutter a number of times about some of the challenges that our operations and maintenance folks have. And one of those challenges, just the inconsistency of, of being able to budget from a year-to-year scenario, and, and being able to, to put forth a good plan and understand exactly how much funding and set up reasonable, repeatable programs. And, and I think that that has borne out in discussions that, that have been brought before this body. So one of the things that I'm really excited about is with the addition of the referendum, this gives us a means to fund the CIP program, the 21 projects that we identified specifically. But it also allows us to use that stormwater money in a way that is a little bit more reproducible. By and large, the operations and even the CIP for the regulatory component, they, they comprise a much smaller part of the pie. And so it gives the folks at operations the opportunity to understand how much money or to project forward a somewhat reasonable expectation of how much money they'll be able to receive. And that allows us to kind of put together some better estimates, and I, and I think that that'll bear out as I continue forward. As I talk about the stormwater enterprise, the ERU itself, finance worked with us, budget, rather, worked with us to put together a five-year forecast. So the slide shown here illustrates how much money was adopted in fiscal year '22, what our estimate is for '23, and then for the next four years in advance. There is a, a little bit of an issue, if you look at fiscal year '22, you see a total of 50,008, or excuse me, 50,813,086, and then that number reduces. And that's because we used a fund balance to purchase vac trucks. The city council will recall that that was authorized. But it is pretty fair to say that if you look at our fiscal year '23 estimate moving forward, you have some idea of how much we anticipate receiving as part of the stormwater ERU. And one of the nice things, as I, as I mentioned, is that now we can project, looking at those estimates, we'll be able to better estimate how much of that money will be able to go towards operations and maintenance, allowing us to put together better programs and a better understanding of what that operations and maintenance will look like. The general fund stormwater lockbox, as, as we term it in, inside the, our organization, the two-and-a-half-cent real estate dedication supports 136 full-time employees, and it is used to support maintenance activities and also some of our regulatory staff. The five-year forecast is also shown on the bottom of this slide. And that, again, is a rather steady source of revenue, we'll be able to use that in a, in a manner that allows us to be able to forecast, forecast forward and not have those big fluctuations. And I, I know I'm repeating myself, but it's really important, and I think it's going to make a big difference to what we're trying to do on our operations and maintenance side. And then lastly, I, I wanted to touch on the existing CIP projects that are in the stormwater maintenance and regulatory side. Now, these are CIP projects that are related only to the operations, so this is not our CIP that was forecast for flood protection, I'll get to that towards the end of the presentation. But these are, these are CIP projects that are kind of melded in with our operations. So the way that, that I've come to think about this is we have operations and maintenance where we go out and routinely repair a sinkhole, or a drainage complaint, or we clean out a ditch, or those types of things. But when there's larger scale issues, then, then sometimes we need to look at different sources of funding. And we have historically used bond revenue and other types of one-time money to, to do that. In this slide, you'll see that we have three lines, operations, water quality, and ARPA. And in fiscal year '22, we received $44.88 million to allow us to do some of that one-time money, and I'm going to show you how we're putting that to use. But again, this helps us to have some idea and be able to project forward what it is that we're looking at. And so what are the programs that operations does with all of that stormwater money? I, I know we've, we've had this question a number of times, and this is something that I hope to be able to come back before this body and give regular updates. And if not this body, I know that we're going to create a citizens committee for the referendum, so perhaps that'll be the, the means. But I hope to be able to give much more regular updates as to what we're doing and how we're expanding the public's funds. Some of the programs that we have in, that we fund through this is stormwater pipe cleaning and rehabilitation, lake dredging, canals, ditches, pump station maintenance, beach erosion. So there's a lot that gets done using our stormwater funds, all the way down to and including mosquito control. And, and I know that there have been questions about why mosquito control would get funded with stormwater. Of course, mosquito control, mosquitoes breed in, in ditches, and, and ditches are a big part of what mosquito control actually works on. This time of year, when, when we have less ditches, or less mosquitoes breeding, our mosquito crews will actually swap over and start doing a lot of roadside ditch work. So this slide was, was asked for because it's a, it's a slide that we have looked at a number of times, and I, I think council's very familiar with it. I know Philip Cutter has presented this slide a number of times. One of the things that I, I wanted to point out here is, we are staying, starting to see some, some, with the ability to project forward and understand what our fund balances are, we are starting to see some improvement in these goals. Now, there's not, with, with capping the ERU, there's not more money that's coming into the ERU other than through natural growth. But because we can now project forward and we're not having to reserve a whole bunch of money that we think might be getting spent on some of the larger-scale CIP programs, we're allowing ourselves the opportunity to look forward and say, okay, we think that we have a much more steady revenue source. And as such, it allows us to, to lower some of these cycles. We still have a couple of them that are shown up here in orange and in red, which would, orange I, I tend to use as a caution, you know, it's a little bit beyond where we'd like it to be, and red is, is a little bit more than where we'd like it to be. And so green is where we've established goals and where we're actually meeting those goals. And one of the things that I really want to point out about this chart, and I've, I've heard it sometimes referred to internally as, as our backlog, whether it be my staff or others, this is not a backlog. So any, any time that you see something up here where it says, for instance, the canal program of 25 years, what this is, is a cycle. It means over the course of 25 years, we believe that we can touch every one of the canals over the course of 25 years. Likewise, enhanced neighborhood rehabilitation, are, are, we believe it'll take us over 90 years to be able to actually get out and do enhanced neighborhood improvements for every one of the neighborhoods in the locality. Now, that doesn't mean that every one of them needs it today, it just means that in order for us to touch every one of them, it would take us about 90 years. We'd like to be at a pace where we're doing this a lot more frequently than we are. And fortunately, with the ARPA money, we'll be able to do that, and I have some more information on that. And so I, I just wanted to kind of clarify that point a little bit. That cycle, the cycle that we show in the program cycle goals, that's our planned activities. That should give council and our citizenry an idea of where we're putting our priorities, what our estimated level of service is, what we'd like to be doing, how, how often we'd like to be able to, to be able to accomplish the goals that we have set aside for ourselves. As opposed to a backlog, which again, sometimes I've heard staff call this our backlog. A backlog, though, is not the same thing. A backlog would be where we have issues that exist and we're not able to get to them yet. That, that does exist, we do have a backlog, and I, I know that you've heard a little bit about it. I would tell you in all honesty, I wanted to come here with a slide and be able to tell you what our backlog is, and I don't have access to that information today, in part because we've changed our computer software. I think I'll be able to get there in a number of months, but I don't have it today. A backlog does exist, we do have, we do have site, we do have work that we'd like to be able to get to, that we're not getting to as fast as we'd like to. But I, again, I think with some of the changes in our funding models, those numbers are going to start to go down. Regrettably, though, I can't give you that, that upfront number. So again, let's, let's talk about some of the projects or some of the programs that we have that we're currently working on. Pipe cleaning. With this budget cycle, city council approved the purchase of five new vacuum trucks and 14 14, addition of 14 full-time employees. Through the InvestAPP program, we have been tracked very diligently about how we're putting this money to work. I would tell you, at this point, we have the vacuum trucks, one pictured right there on the left. We had a couple of issues with them, so we sent them back for some warranty work, so we haven't got them fully, we just got them back from the warranty work. But we did also acquire the employees, and the employees, as you can see on the right, have already gotten to work. We did have some other vacuum trucks that we've, that we've put it, that we've pressed into service. We still have a few employees left to, to hire, but on the whole, we're moving, and we're moving on this project. In the city, we have about 1,100 miles of pipe. Our goal, again, our goal is to do 220 miles of pipe per year. So we'd like to have a five-year cycle with every bit of that, not every bit, but with those systems being camered, that's what the CCTV stands for, about every 15 years. So again, our status, we've hired eight full-time employees. We're, the trucks are delivered. We've worked through the maintenance issues, and we still have a couple of employees yet to hire, but we are going on this program. Also, in this year's budget, city council approved us to get seven full-time employees and equipment to improve our BMP maintenance program. Crews were funded and have, we've started to acquire the employees at this point. In fact, we've hired all full-time employees. The equipment is ordered, but the equipment that we don't have, we're borrowing from other units in our program. So those employees are also set to work. Our Southern Canal and Lead Ditch program, this is done through, as I, as I mentioned before, some of our stuff is done through operations and some of it's done through CIP. This is actually identified as a CIP project, but it's a recurring CIP project, so it, it functions very similar to an, or, an operations project. Our current cycle, though, is ongoing. It was site, work at Site 15 at Beggar's Bridge, Site 18 at Beggar's Bridge, and Site 11. I think we have some other work that is, that is scheduled to come forth. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is that on our roadway maintenance side, we have a firm that comes in every five years and does an assessment of all of our roads. And by doing that assessment, we have a, a very non-biased assessment of the roads that allows us to say, what segments of the road need to be addressed first? I've asked staff to start working towards that on our, on our ditches. I, I think that that is something that would help us to have a really good understanding of where our biggest issues lie on the ditches. I think with the variability in our staff and each of their different viewpoints, sometimes it's been difficult for us to have a good understanding of which sections need to be addressed first. We're not waiting for that, we're not waiting for that study to come through. We have work that's scheduled and ongoing, and we will continue to do so. But at the same time, we're, I've also asked and tasked staff to put forth some work towards developing a lead ditch drainage assessment. Following that assessment, we'll move into the off-road ditch system to be able to identify where those ditches have priorities and how we can best address those. The off-road ditch system is, has a CIP of about 2.27 million and operating of 6.7 million. We're currently working about every, on an eight-year cycle, and I know at this point we have been to every one of these off-road ditches. Now, not every one of these ditches has had equipment in that's had to clean it out and, and regrade it and re-drain it. Oftentimes, the initial, the initial push might have just identified that there was brush, trees, leaves, debris, that type of stuff. And, and staff may have just done something simple that they call a snag and drag is what they call it internally, just simple amount of maintenance to keep it flowing. The next time we go through it might require more work. And so sometimes it can be difficult to see whether we've been there or not, but, but it's been assessed in every one of the ditches in this zone, in this classification of the off-road. And, and for those that maybe are not as familiar with the ditches, you have roadside ditches that flee, that flow into these off-road ditches, which then flow into our lead ditch or canals. And that flows then into the bay rivers or, or whatnot. So these are kind of the intermediaries, kind of the arterials of our, if I were to equate it to a roadway network, our arterials. Next program I wanted to talk a little bit about is the Pipe System Neighborhood Rehabilitation. This program scattered throughout the city. It's very popular. If you recall from my slide, I said it would take us 90 years to be able to reach every one of the communities. Again, not every one of the communities needs it, but it gives you some idea of the breadth and scope of what would be done, of what it would take to touch every one of these neighborhoods in the way that we'd like to do it. These are some of the neighborhoods that have had that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hanson. Could you go back to the, the slide you were just on? Could you, the, the legend is so small, I'm having trouble making sense of what those colors represent. Could you provide a little more detail?
I apologize. The, the legend on the, the map is really just shown to illustrate the number of, of neighborhoods that are out there. The legend is actually just the number of cave-in repairs. Again, it's an internal map. I, I just wanted some color on the map, so I apologize. It wasn't intended to reflect anything that you needed to, to refer to, other than just to give you some idea of the number of neighborhoods that are out there. The ones that are darker, though, that, if you're, if you're interested in what the map represents, the ones that are darker have, for lack of a better word, more cave-ins, I would, I would deem those neighborhoods probably to have more problems.
And, and so the colors don't necessarily represent the timeframe it would require for those cave-ins to be repaired, or does it?
No, sir. It, it doesn't. It's really just kind of an indication to us of where we want to put our priorities. Those are the, those are the communities where we're experiencing the most complaints, having the most issues. So as we're setting our priorities, we know where we want to, where we want to put our priorities.
I appreciate that. And, and for the folks who are viewing and for the council, I really want to emphasize that the neighborhoods that I have the privilege to represent are shown here with the most colored, which really indicates what we've known for a long time, which is that cave-in are a real nuisance and an ongoing problem that it's really our responsibility to address, to continue to address. And I thank you for your efforts in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Councilman, I can, I can tell you that that slide was given to me, but I couldn't tell you exactly what the date of that preparation of that map is. So I, what I would like to point out is that, is that we have done, that we have 12 neighborhoods under construction right now, and those 12 are shown on the left here. There are a number that are shown on the right that actually give you some idea of, of the success that we've seen after doing our neighborhood program. So Aragona Village, for instance, we did it back in 2014. We saw a 76% reduction in the number of calls for flooding, 7% reduction in the number of cave-in calls, and a 42% decrease for flood and cave-in calls since rehab. So just some idea of the success that we're seeing. All of these have shown to have a very good return on investment. And that's, I think, it's really important to note that this is an important program for us. And as I mentioned, it would take us about 90 years to, to probably be able to touch on everything. Fortunately, though, we receive money through, money, city council had appropriated money through the ARPA, and they appropriated enough money for us to do 21 neighborhoods, which for a normal year, we'd be able to do about four or six, four to six. And so that's, that's a, that's a very good shot in the arm, and it's going to help us make a significant dent in this. Now that, yes, sir.
Just curious if you could describe in more detail, when you talk about that acceleration in capacity, is that, are you contracting with private companies to assist you with these, or is the city taking on all of this work ourselves?
It's a mixed bag, sir. So the, the very first step, we work with a private contractor to help us evaluate what goes on in the neighborhood, where the issues are, what's causing the sinkholes, are there pipes that are separated, are there cave-ins, that type of thing. So they do a lot of that through camera.
That's a lot of the TV work that we see in the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir. They do cleaning and, and TV work. And then after they've done their assessment, then we work with our engineering firm to help us determine what that scope of repair is. And sometimes it's an engineering firm, and sometimes it's limited, and we can, we could probably deal with it internally. And then what we'll do then is we'll have a, a firm assist us, it's a firm that will help us on the backside doing the actual restoration work. What we're anticipating through the ARPA program, because there's so many, is that we're going to try and bundle neighborhoods, and that we will try to make this a more productive process, rather than looking at a neighborhood at a time, that we'll try to bundle them together in, in neighborhoods that are of similar age, similar complexity, similar type of problems.
And just for, thank you. Would you say, just roughly, how much of this work is being done by contractors versus city workforce? And I'm asking these questions because I think the public would like to know, and I also think it's relevant in terms of the discussions we're having about our city workforce generally.
I, I would say for this particular program, when you're talking about going in and doing a, a complete neighborhood assessment and, and significant amount of restoration work that we're doing here, the large majority of the work itself is done by contractor, overseen by city staff, and overseen by city inspectors. So there's a, there's a component. If you wanted me to put a percentage on it, I'd say 70, 30 private.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Finley has a question.
And so of those 21 neighborhoods there, you say a typical pace is four to six per year. With the ARPA money, when will those 21 neighborhoods get done? Is it four year, all of this, when one year?
No, no, ma'am. It'll be done, it has to be done by the end of calendar year 2024. So they will be done by the end of calendar year 2024. So we have about three and a half years.
So those 21 neighborhoods will look, will be done in that length of time, you think?
That's, that's our projection, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
In addition to the other ones?
In addition to what we already have scheduled. But understanding that there is a, there is a threshold, so I, I would not say we're probably going to have 20 more than this, because I think there's probably a resource limit as to how much we can accomplish. But, but I do, but yes, ma'am, I do think we're going to have 20, 21 done plus.
Yeah, I think the caveat, what LJ's saying is that we all know that construction costs are going through the roof. The bottom referendum is being released into the world, into the Virginia Beach market, the same time that the American Rescue Plan money is being released into the Virginia Beach market, and at the same time that the federal infrastructure program is being released into the market. What we think is 21 neighborhoods today may not be that, once you sort out all the inflation costs associated with construction. So that's one of the difficulties that LJ's having right now, in terms of calculating what the impact of all this stuff is going to be right now, is that we're seeing price increases on commodities and materials and construction that we otherwise didn't see. So we're trying our best to give a picture of what it, what it probably will look like.
Ms. Finley?
Well, it would be helpful, because people want to know, when is my neighborhood going to get done? It would be helpful if we could get a, a schedule every six months or something about, we're going to be working in these areas over the next six months, just so we know where the work is being done.
And what got done in the six months?
That too.
Yes. If you recall, when I started, I said, the one thing I really want to be able to do is tell you what we're accomplishing, right? That I would much rather, I would much rather give that presentation than this presentation, if I'm brutally honest. Because this is very hard for me to tell you what we're going to do, not knowing what's going to happen in the market. I would much rather be back here telling you, this is what we did.
Well, how about giving us, in first of January, what you did the last, what these last six months accomplished, seriously? Because I really don't know what's been done where, and it's hard to answer questions because we don't know. But if you could tell us what you did for the last six months, it would be appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. Also, on the same vein of the ARPA funding, the lake dredging, again, these are the bid packages that we're anticipating that will be rolling out as part of our ARPA package for lake drainage, sorry, lake maintenance, rather. Again, we typically do about five to seven per year. We're showing 17 that will be done in addition as a result of our ARPA funding.
Can I ask a quick question about? So I had, you and I had spoken, I went to a King's Grant Civic League meeting, and they were asking about the outfalls into those lakes in their neighborhood, and they had silted up, and in some cases were growing brush and what have you. Is, is this going to take care of those kind of issues where the outfalls will be, you know, maintained, or?
For facilities that we have the opportunity to do the work for. The facilities that you asked me about have some complexities with them that tie to the ownership of the property, lack of easements, those types of things. But yes, that is the type of work that would be getting done under this program.
Cleaning out the outfalls where they silt up and everything like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I, I did have a couple of slides that I wanted to tell you briefly about where we are with, with regard to the flood protection program. And again, reminder that we are about one month away, one month since we've passed the resolution. So while we're working feverishly, I don't have a lot that I can report to you at this point. One thing I really did want to point out, though, is that our intent is to try to put together bundles of packages so that we can be logical, effective, and efficient in how we're expending our funds. Please understand, we had a CIP that was in place July 1st, and a number of stormwater programs were tied to that. Some of these referendum projects are going to overlap, or they were the next phase. And so we're trying to find the best way possible to put this in, to put this together in logical means by which we can bundle the programs and projects together. Some of those bundles, this is very tentative, but we wanted, we wanted you to understand, you know, kind of what that might look like. If you look at the second, second group there, Chub Lake, Lake Bradford program, some of that work is already ongoing. Lake Pleasure House Outfall and Lake Bradford Dredging, for instance, are, are scheduled to be going to construction next year. So again, that's, that's progress, even though it was originally intended in the, in a CIP that was funded differently.
For example, on that project, and that's Mr. Jones's, so I don't know it nearly as well as he does, but when we, when we had the referendum question, I think maybe that that amount was based on what the total amount for the project was. So if there's some, been some that's already been done, and there's been some expenditure, do you level that out? And the part that's already been done and paid for then is available for something else?
Well, none of--
Or do you just start from what, what's left to do?
I may have to refer some of those budgetary questions to, to our, our budget director, Kevin Chatalier. But what we're looking at is really trying to put the projects together, understanding that they have different funding sources, but we're still trying to put them together in logical bundles so that we can help the process to move forward, again, effectively and efficiently. It, it, it would be incredibly challenging for us to just take one, throw everything into one pot and try and make that work. That doesn't seem like a good idea. But we do think that due to proximity, nature of projects, mostly proximity, but nature of project and those types of things, it gives us the opportunity to, to capitalize on efficiencies that we can get through the contracting process to award to a single contractor, that we might be able to mobilize only one time and not have to charge us multiple mobilizing charges. To be able to schedule work so that, rather than have them finish everything out, put seed down, and then have somebody else come in, tear up some of the sidewalk, tear up some of the curb and gutter, re-disturb the site all over again to build the next phase, that they could put what they needed to and, and kind of identify some of their own things. And so that's where we, that's where we feel that we have efficiencies that we can wrap together. The work that we're doing with our consultant on the flood protection program, or the flood protection administration program, is actually being very helpful in this regard. I, I did have a couple more slides just to show you some of the other ones that we're looking to bundle together. Again, you'll see that there's a lot of construction that's already scheduled to go to work. And, and so I do think that from a standpoint of, of the taxpayer, they're going to be seeing the ripple effect signs and logos, letting them know that this work is being done, and it's being done under this, under this purpose. And this last slide is, is very similar, but it also talks about the fact that we just have a number of initiatives, a number of programs that we're still continuing to move forward. While they're not tied necessarily to a construction project, they are still part of that flood protection program as a whole. And with that, I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Will we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I know this is kind of a little thing, but I'm really happy to see you using the branding of the ripple effect, because that's what the voters voted on, and for them to be able to see that moving forward-- be able to see that moving forward, because branding is a really important thing to, you know, to keep in people's minds, and they're, they're going to want to make sure they know, okay, we voted for this, where are these projects? And like I say, it's, it's a small thing, but I think it's very significant. So I'm really happy to see you continuing with that and utilize it wherever possible.
Yes, ma'am. We, we've had an internal discussion, and we've, we've determined that that will be on every one of our construction signs that are tied to the flood protection program. So again, that folks know that this is something that they're funding through their, through their taxes.
And I thought it was very clever when they came up with it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. We're looking forward to some really good stuff here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So anything else?
I said for briefings.
Okay. Well, then we can go into council discussion initiatives, comments. Ms. Henley?
I'm sure there's somebody else besides me. I seem to be the only one. I'm taking John's place today, I'll do. I would just like to request that we have, that the council gets a briefing, a public briefing that's televised, about the Kitty Hawk Avengrid Wind Energy Project as early as possible in January, because there's an awful lot out there that's giving people some angst. And I think it's important that they all hear what is proposed, and there can be a, a discussion of, of what the facts are and what the implications will be and so forth, instead of the what ifs and so forth. So if we could get that as soon as possible in January, I'd appreciate it.
That was down in Sandbridge Friday night, and there was a lot of discussion about, about this. So I think, and I told her that we gave direction for the staff to have a public meeting ASAP to really help everybody with that. So thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Jones and I, this morning, we met with the leadership of the, of the school board and their superintendent and financial people, and we, we talked about the, their, their resolution coming forward, and, and they have CARES Act money, and they have ARPA money, and then they have reversion fund money. And so we, we had some really good discussions, and to just be really open, Mr. Jones and I have been working with, on the school modernization committee since 2000, I think.
About, yeah.
About that. So 20, over 20 years, and every, you know, year we, you know, we're behind in school construction, we're behind in school construction. So we're hoping that they're going to go back and really look at everything and see if there's any extra money anywhere else that they could slide around it and put more into school construction so that we can get some, you know, get some schools built, because we're, we're behind. And so they're going to be coming back to us, and we'll be having, you know, another, they'll be coming before the council as well. So would you like to add anything to that?
Only that I thought it was a good meeting and that they were receptive to our comments. And I think as the vice mayor stated, we, we implied, we asked them to, to be fairly specific as to what they were planning on doing as far as the CARES Fund and the ARPA, ARPA funds, and with their reversion money, some proposed reversion money, and not speak in general terms, but give us some fairly detailed descriptions of what they at least propose, and then with that, those monies. And I, I think that particularly we honed in on the reversion monies because there's been some questions about it, and we're hoping that they will take our advice and, and give us a clear description of what it is they intend to do with their request that I assume all of you have read by now, so.
And their ARPA money and CARES Act money is handled differently than ours. We, it seems that we had a lot more flexibility with how we could use theirs and ours, but theirs, they don't have as much flexibility, but they have more time to spend it, too. So I, they're going to be giving us their plans of how, I think they have like three years to spend, to spend it, where we had a much shorter time. So we've asked them to give us their plans of how they plan to do that. So we were hoping we could utilize some of that for some school construction. I don't think we can, but at least we'll, we'll have a better understanding of it, and hopefully some of the reversion money. Interesting enough, the, the real reversion money was about 14 million, which is in line of what it's been in the past. More, more was the true-up money that became because money wasn't spent because of hiring and not having enough personnel, so that made that number a lot bigger. But their actual reversion money was about 14 million, which they have in their, you know, their policy to be about 2% to, to be able to do that, so. Because we don't want to ever happen what happened in 1996, do we, Mr. Branch?
Nope.
So anyway, if anybody has any questions, you can just let us know, but we wanted to give you an update, and they'll be coming to us in January, and we'll also be getting some more reports, so you'll be able to see and, you know, ask your questions. Mr. DeHany, did you want to add anything?
No, I'll find out. Just drinking some water.
He's just drinking some water. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? I already commented about the, yesterday, the service awards.
You did.
Yes, Ms. Swoon.
I have just a couple of things, and as was mentioned, I was, it was good to be able to go out to one of the service awards ceremonies. It's very important. I'd just like to express my appreciation for staff, whether they've worked here for six months, two years to 50 years. It's very important, the work that we do here, the progress of our city, all goes to our city staff. And so especially during this time, this Christmas season, where we give gifts to others, and before with Thanksgiving, where we are thankful, just would like to express my sincere appreciation and thankfulness for our staff 365 days of the year for all that you do. Now, in terms of, there's a matter that I wanted to bring up in terms of Parks and Rec. I attended their meeting a couple weeks ago, and I just wanted to set in the forefront, because during the meeting, they brought up that they need $3 million for their budget. And in that meeting, they discussed, of course, as many of you know, just really trying to continue the work that they're doing in that department, the services that they're providing. And so I told them that I would make sure that I highlighted that need so that everybody is aware of that $3 million need. And as was mentioned previously, there are concerns about staffing and making sure services are provided. So that's, it's, this is a good time to kind of focus on that need for Parks and Rec. And then also make sure that I place that need at the forefront in the beginning of the budget cycle. So just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that need. They don't want to have to increase funding for the services that they currently provide, or was mentioned that some of the service that, services that are provided had to be cut back. And so they don't want to increase funding for memberships if they don't have to. And so just wanted to relay that information to everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Bruci?
Thank you. Well, one of the number of outcomes that have been generated by the discussions regarding the conditional use permit application on Centerra Way is a discussion that I think is very important for our community about BMX riders. For those of you who read the transcript from the Planning Commission, one of the, something that arose out of the discussions related to the Centerra Way application is that there was a very extensive and impressive and intricate BMX trail that was constructed by riders on the Centerra Way property. And the riders, I've spoken to them, I had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, and we have another meeting coming up. They understand that that property isn't conducive to, well, one, that they don't have legal access to the property, and two, that changes are necessary in order to maintain a track that's accessible and can be enjoyed by everyone in our community. So I'm in the process of working with city staff and stakeholders to hopefully identify a location where we can establish a city-supported BMX track in Virginia Beach. These tracks are emerging all around the country, they're extremely popular, and we do have some details to work through, but I think we owe it to the BMX community and really the bikes, the bike community in Virginia Beach generally to support this endeavor. Virginia Beach, as we know, has a history, we have a culture of what I might refer to as action sports, surf, skate, and BMX is consistent with that culture. And we would be very well positioned from, from a hospitality perspective and from a neighborhood and community enjoyment perspective to support the BMX riders in Virginia Beach. So I look forward to reporting more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Henley?
Since we have just a few extra minutes, I think, when you mentioned Parks and Rec, of course, the thing that popped into my mind right away was their most immediate concern, which is covering the after-school programs, after-school and before-school programs, and I really appreciate all the work that they, they're giving, it's their top priority right now. But I think we, with so many of the things that, that, that we do, we, we take a lot of these things for granted, and I think we, we had not been appreciating enough just how important that childcare program is to our, our citizens. So many, and when we're particularly thinking about the workforce needs, childcare is one of the major things for the workforce need, not only ours, our workforce, but all the workforce. And I think particularly, you know, we've been concerned a lot about small businesses. I mean, people, in order to have a job, and if they have children, they have to have childcare, and, you know, the salary can get to a point where they just can't afford the childcare, so they have to leave the workforce. And I think that's probably what has happened with a lot of the general workforce. We've been hearing over and over in presentations, we heard it in our five-year forecast, that, you know, childcare is a major component of, of this whole workforce issue, shortage. And so looking forward on how we're going to address the needs, I think it's important, and we have said, you know, we want a, a more detailed accounting during the budget of just what we're spending the money on. I think it's important for us to really realize all of the implications of these things that we do provide, because everything is really connected. And I, I think we appreciate it more when we found out that some things had to be cut, then we really find out, you know, who was depending on these things, and, and this is certainly one of them. And I, I will just say thank you to Parks and Rec and the, and the city manager for putting this as a top priority and really trying to do something about, about that issue before we do have to, to make final decisions there, but how important it is. But also, our workforce needs, we've been talking about that a lot, and I, I think thinking ahead to the budget and how we spend money and so forth is going to be an important thing because we're looking at the market salary study, and I think we can anticipate that we're going to need to be paying better salaries than we are now in order to attract and retain people in our own workforce. When do we really expect to get that, and when will we be involved in looking at this issue?
I think the delivery time for that is end of January, February timeframe. We want to incorporate it as part of the budget, and definitely want to have a detailed conversation with the council on it on the, probably at the retreat. You know, so we hopefully be able to kind of get it towards end of January, early February timeframe, and then staff can digest it, and then get in the package that we can have a detailed conversation with the council on it around the retreat timeframe.
Well, I think it's really important that we, you know, we, we sort of have been in a, how do we spend money frame, and I think recognizing that this is going to be an important issue for us. We want to make sure we're in a position that we can address those needs, because I think that's going to be a priority, not only for us, but the schools. I understand the governor has a major increase for teachers in his proposed budget, which of course is going to funnel down to us because of all of the local impacts with that. So I, I really think we have to be mindful that this is coming, and of course, these are not just one-time expenditures. It's what we do is going to impact every year's budget going forward. But I certainly think we have to recognize that, that this is going to be something we're going to have to deal with, and we want to be in a position to be able to do it.
I think you're right. Okay, so we ready to do the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have one speaker who has signed up on all of them. And other than that, we don't have any other speakers on ordinance and resolutions. But on the, under planning, we have one speaker who has signed up on all of them. And, and then we have individual speakers who want to speak to us on item four, item five, and item seven. So is the only one that appears to be, other than the one speaker who you-
So Mr. Jones, Councilmember Jones, the applicant is the only other person, only individual signed up for number seven, for under planning, the applicant. So at this point, the only person opposed is the one speaker.
Ms. Masner?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I still think, since there was a lot of opposition expressed at the Planning Commission, and I have a feeling there will be a lot of folks watching, I, I think we need to address that issue publicly just so we can answer the questions that have been out there. I, I certainly think I'm, we're, we're-
We can pull that-
Looking to approve it, but I think there, there was a lot of misunderstanding because there was not the public outreach at the beginning. And so when you don't explain things to start with, you get a lot of misinformation. And I think this one highlights again why we need to get back to that policy of, they need to go out to the community at the very beginning instead of waiting until the, the opposition fills in the blanks.
All right. Also, you had mutts and missions with, with the number six next to it.
That was just a, that was just a typo.
It's actually seven.
Yes. We'll, we'll fix that. It's just a typo.
All right. So-
Just on the speaker list, John.
Oh. It looks like Holland Lakes Associates is the only item. Well, that's not true. James B. Richards Jr. and Linda Champion Richards for a street closure in the District Six Beach.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay? Item three, Michael I. Ash and Mitzi S. Ash co-trustees of the Ash Revocable Trust, Beach District.
No objection to me on the consent document. Thank you.
And Atlantic, item one, Atlantic Development Associates LLC, Beach District. Okay?
Same. Okay.
Looks like it's all about the beach tonight.
No, they're on, they're on consent. It's, it's
That's true.
And item four, we have a speaker. Item five, we have a speaker. Are, are those?
They are the same property, so I think they can be heard together. Can they?
It's
All right.
Two separate applications.
And
Six.
I note that, that the speaker on four, five, and are both the same person as, so is she going to do that when she does the WebEx?
I, I guess it's, can we do
There were two set, well, that's a question for, for the attorney. There were two separate applications. That's what, they're two separate items. So Can we hear them together, Mr. Styles?
You can hear them together, but you probably ought to give them the full six minutes. Is it a three?
All right. Looks like after our speaker who speaks on everything, probably consent is going to be item two, item three, item six, under planning.
And one.
Thank you. Mr. Jones and, and, and Ms. Wilson, I would like to include item six on the consent agenda. And I want to just make a, a quick notation and speak very clearly. I have received no opposition to this application. I've spoken with the applicant, I've spoken with tenants of the shopping center, and I have received no, no opposition. So therefore, I would like to include it on the consent agenda. But during the formal session, upon adoption or before adoption of the consent agenda, I'd like to make a remark about this planning item.
Okay.
With your permission. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Under ordinance number six, can we hear that so the public can have an understanding? I, I've gotten a couple of emails just on how does this acquisition of this regional BNP of this property, how does that affect the, the bond referendum? And where's that aligned? So has this been funded by the bond referendum or?
Fine, we'll pull it now. All right.
Are we talking about the agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to talk about item three, under ordinances, the three ordinances that are on at the request of Mr. Kellum. And I have some real concerns about the process here. Just sitting at this meeting, I've heard that we need $3 million for Parks and Rec, got a BMX track we're talking about, the compensation report that's going to come that I'm sure will have a price tag with it. Last week, we had a briefing from our Parks and Rec director who said that we have numerous playgrounds with deferred maintenance and 40 park sites that are completely undeveloped. And we haven't scratched the surface of going through the budget. And yet here we have ordinances where we're going to reduce taxes and give back outside of the budget cycle. And we had an email from one of our fellow council members suggesting that we're going to do this again with car tax money and a taxpayer rebate to the citizens. And I just have never seen budgeting like this. I, I don't agree with it. I don't think it's the right way we should be doing business. I mean, we can sit here all the way till May and do different tax reduction programs and all that sort of thing. But as I've gone around and talked to department heads and seen what's going on, and, and the impact of, of the COVID and the two years of really stalling some of the initiatives that we need to do here, I think this budget is really an opportunity for us to stand the city back up again in a solid position. And I think that's a priority that we need to take into account before we start doing these programs where we're going to reduce tax rates and what have you. We may be able to get to those during the budget process, but that's the proper time to do these sort of things when you can look at them in the entire context of the budget. So my preference would be to table these ordinances. If that's not the will of this body, I have prepared an alternate ordinance for the B-pole tax. When we got the information from the staff on what our cities in the region are doing, every other city in the region is at the $100,000 level for the B-pole tax. Only Chesapeake is at the $200,000. So I could see maybe the logic of, of meeting Chesapeake. But I don't understand why we want to get into
Mr.?
Let him finish, please.
Okay.
If you had him finish, yeah.
Thank you.
Let him finish, please.
So I will be presenting for consideration if the will is not to, to table these initiatives until the full budget process. And the other two, City Manager Duhany, I'd like to know if, if they're time-sensitive, if they have to be passed prior to the end of this calendar year, or if they, I know the B-pole was time-sensitive according to the commission revenue, but the other two I thought could take place during the course of our conversation. I, I like looking at all of the, the tax issues that we have and, and business. And I'd like to hear from our economic development people as to what the priority should be for business expansion and retention. But I just think we have a lot of needs. And I'm reticent to do something in a silo without the full consideration of, of the entire budget. So just if you would answer that, and then I'll see to Councilmember Rouse.
All right. So what, I guess what you're saying is you'd like to pull that item and, and comment on it.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to pull all three?
Yes.
That's my understanding. That, that was my question is, I thought we, we're going to have a discussion. Wasn't any rebuttal or remarks. I just thought we, this consent agenda, you want to hear and pull the item, we have a discussion.
But I didn't want to, I didn't want to spring on you at the meeting that I have an alternate ordinance for the
Nor, nor do I want to spring on you that I would have rebuttal to that, but I'm not going to use it.
Can we all go one at a time and have some decorum, please?
There's no process here.
Let me get through the, through the ordinances for the consent agenda. And if anybody wants to pull them as I read them out by, just say so, okay?
Thank you.
Right. Okay. Item H2, ordinance to designate as exempt a real and personal property, a real personal property taxes. Anybody want to pull it?
Where are we, where are you?
Yeah.
Where, where are you?
The ordinances.
Under ordinances and resolutions, item two.
Item two is, oh, the exempt, yeah. Everybody okay with those? All right, that's considered.
All right. Item three, we're going to pull. Item four, regarding, a resolution regarding membership for the 31st Memorial Committee requested by Councilmembers Berluci and Wooten. Anybody want to pull that? Item five, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property, A, West Canal located at 2309 Broad Bay Road, and B, unimproved sections of City Rights Way at 4th Raleigh, Fort Raleigh Drive. Anybody want to pull that?
Mr. Jones, could I make?
Excuse me, Mr. Tower, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just would ask, you know, I never have quite figured out the system of why sometimes we know what district these things are on by simply looking at the agenda, and other times we don't.
I think it's just the planning items that are by district.
Yeah. Well, as a district representative, I can tell you that I pay attention to those. It's very convenient to have all of the items, whether they're planning or ordinances, identified by their district. And I'm just taking this opportunity to pass that on.
I'm sure that, I'm sure they can make that possible.
Item six, Mr. Rouse has asked us to pull that. Okay. And I, item eight.
Seven?
Seven, ordinance to appropriate $380,000 from net assets of the water and sewer enterprise fund to purchase a replacement sewer cleaner. Anybody want to pull that? Item eight, ordinance to accept and appropriate A, $32,107 from the Commonwealth Virginia to the Virginia Beach Public Library operating budget and authorize city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement for a furniture replacement of the Myra E. Ovendorf Library in the Bayside Area Services Library. That one okay? B, four, accept and appropriate $4,021,001, $3625 for the American Rescue Plan, coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funds, municipal utility assistance program to the Department of Public Utilities operating budget. Everybody okay? And item C, $4,486,715 in federal funding from the shuttered venue operators grant, established capital project, 100608, Virginia Aquarium Anvil Holding Facility, and appropriate funding for, for the project and the Department of Virginia Aquarium. Everybody okay?
Did we do number one?
Yep.
Did we do number one?
And item one, is ordinance to transfer $7 million of existing appropriations in the capital project, 1059, 10059 Resort Parking District to the Virginia Beach Development Authority, reacquisition of 200 public parking spaces at 35th Street. Everybody okay?
All right. Looks like we've got a plan. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So I don't have a call for closed session?
Yes, ma'am. It's, I'll put it at your desk.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, property discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3. Beach District, Beach District, Beach District. I told you it's about the Beach District today. Personnel matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All voting board is open.
Five, five vote of nine to zero, you recess into closed session.
Thank you.
We're ahead of schedule.